And the days of.
Good morning, everyone. This is Knox County Board of Commissioners, May twenty second, two thousand twenty five. Our first matter of order is Bethany Salmar is here to talk about the Knox County Transit. And give us an update on that. And so welcome. For is all yours.
Thank you. Yeah, so we have quite a bit going on for transit. Um, we're kind of taking this rebranding and it's it's a launchpad for a lot of different changes that have been a long time coming. So um, I did provide some of the numbers just to give you a status update of our trip counts. They're holding pretty steady. Um, and just separated out the the Kenyan trips as well. So for February, we had nine thousand six hundred six trips. Um, and then March and April, we've had eleven thousand. Um, April actually is eleven thousand six hundred thirty two. So. We're pretty strong. Um, I also split out the wheelchair counts. We're doing um, between eight hundred and one thousand. Um, trips a month, um, just for loading and unloading wheelchairs. Uh, and then I also did the split out for the purpose, trip purpose, just to see that that's standard. We are still holding steady at forty percent for employment trips, uh, right around eighteen and nineteen percent for medical. We um, we do still have the night bus. Cheryl was asking me that beforehand. We had um, one of our drivers uh, had another opportunity and and went on to go do some new things. And she was our main night bus driver. So we've done a little bit of shifting around. Uh, we now run it till one A M. We only had about two riders that were utilizing it between one and three A M. So. It was not, you know, not something that was heavily utilized and just made more sense cost wise and. It's a little bit easier to sell uh, a driver on working till one A M. Instead of three A M. So. We've shifted that. We are doing that. We did have to go back to doing just one night bus. So we do have more demand than we can fill at this point, but we are just watching the budget and watching the shifts on that. Um, so at this point, I will be meeting with some of the manufacturers and some of the. Uh, food service entities that benefit from this to see if they will be um, able to sponsor. Our um, services as they continue. Um, the costs of the operations are not astronomical, so it really does make sense to keep continuing the service. Uh, it's extremely valuable. All of these are workforce, transportation. Um, trips, which is, you know, people contributing to our economy.
That one A M.
Yes.
Is that a call for pickup or just a route that you run on that?
It's all them. It's all a call for pickup. So and that's the other interesting thing that we've seen is um. There are a lot of, there are a lot of cancellations and there are a lot of time changes. So we actually have a cell phone that they can, the riders can text the driver because we've just found that we need that flexibility. I don't know if it's people just getting off early or um. Shift changes in the last minute, you know, and there just seems to be a lot of that going on. Um. So it it, you know, it's been interesting to kind of watch um, the the trip flow that way. Um, yeah, so that's kind of last call for us a pickup and then we'll drop off. So they'll probably be driving till about one thirty before then. Um, so it has been, you know, it is something that we intend to continue as we have the funding and. It is something that's valuable enough to incorporate into our operations and just um. Seek the sponsorship to keep that local match that will keep us sustained. So.
So when you say seek the sponsorship, are you talking exclusively federal state sponsorship? Or are you talking about local businesses?
Local, local businesses, donations. Um, as we've looked at our. Contract trips, there's not enough contract trips to provide the full local match that we need to match our federal funding. Um, and so this is a new strategy that we're going to go seek. Um, funding from folks that have a benefit, a direct benefit, getting employees to and from work or.
Forty percent of your rides are employment. I mean, I think the last time we talked, you said it was basically retail though, wasn't it? The employment rides?
Heavily, yes. I'd say the majority was more um. We do several people from Walmart and some Wendy's and McDonald's and that kind of um. Yeah, I think that that's still a conversation worth having. I know that it's, you know, nobody has, seems to feel like they have extra money rolling around and I know that things are uncertain. So. I do understand that, but um, we will be having those conversations. Just just to, also now that I have all kinds of new information to hand out and. So it kind of works hand in hand just to get our um, rebranding and information. Because most people just don't know about our services. So I can educate the employers on what our services are. And, you know, if you would like to donate, then that would be appreciated. So um. You know, we'll, we'll see what the future holds and we'll see how those conversations go, but. Um, there are some employers that have several employees that are coming with us. So. Uh, hopefully that will be an easier conversation. So. That's where we are operationally. The only other thing I did provide a packet with maps and schedules. Of next routes. So we are looking to launch these this summer. This is a really good time for us. First of all, because of the rebranding and we've seemed to have people's attention. And um, also usually in the summer, our trips go down a little bit, so we will be able to accommodate with our staff. So these are, these are the drafts that we have. You can see the different. I won't go over it in detail, but you can see there's four different lines. They run on a half hour loop. They all intersect. And um, they will be fare free. So that folks will have an easier access to get from one end of the city to another. We have stops at um, K C H. We have Walmart, Kroger, all of our big destinations. And then we're at a a couple of the key apartment complexes that we serve. So. We're really excited. Our, our soft launch date is uh, June second. So we're looking at the beginning of June. We have the schedule written and at this point, there's a lot of um. Just the details will need to work out and just give them and making the jump. So we do have enough trips distributed across these areas. We've done a few test, test days of. If we had the routes, what would we direct to it? Um, and we do have a good amount of trips that would be served on the route versus on the demand response. So these are flex routes, meaning that we can pull off. And off to the side or a few streets in it if people are unable to get to the stop. So that can accommodate more people. The big thing is that we have to stay on, on target and on track and on time.
Just briefly, it looks like you did a, did a good job overlapping these routes too. Yeah, good job.
It's, it's, you know, it's almost, it's a rabbit hole because you can go down and you can second guess. And we really went off. This is from the fixed route study from the data and the analysis, but also had to tweak it a little bit.
Looks like some overlap.
Yeah.
Covering.
Yeah.
Area overlapping. Looks good.
And and we do hope to launch a fifth one south of the river in the fall. I know those people might feel like we did, we see who we're gonna look, we're gonna, I think it's a good chance we'll launch another.
Or just Riverside. Did you know, did you have one of these seeds for the Kishakson Express Route? My printer just didn't bend it up. Maybe I have it. Maybe, yeah, that's.
That's the one that didn't. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I have plenty of copies, so you can have that one.
Yes, just so those people who are watching uh, listening in uh, the stops on the Yellow Jacket Express or Riverside Park. Arch Park, the Health Department, the Transit Building. So that's. Uh, you have chest on your, okay. B M V and Monroe Street, which is six twenty five North Sandusky Street. That's the Yellow Jacket Express. Uh, Round Hill Route is revived church. Hawthorne Apartments, Iowa, the Senior Village Kroger, and then the Transit Building down in Chestnut. The Yalga Routes is the Health Department, Knox Community Hospital. Um, Beach Tree Apartments, the Transit Building. And then the Kishakson Express is a, our building on Chestnut Street, Transit Building. Walmart, Dollar Tree and Kroger. And it's all different times on all those. So great job.
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully at the, the transfer spot, most waits are about ten to fifteen minutes. I think there's maybe a twenty minute.
So.
Yeah, yeah. So we tried to kind of stagger it. Then you can go down the rabbit hole trying to, to go perfect it. But um, so we're gonna test these out. These, this will be a pilot. You know, we, we, we wanna see what works. We're not gonna circulate empty buses certainly. So we will be launching these and we um. Will be in the Memorial Day Parade, so we'll be passing out maps and candy. Right? Yeah, so you can have some candy.
When you look at these, you know, it looks like it's just, hey, it's a simple. You know, you just list them out, but I think this is kind of like a testament to Bethany and her, and her team. This is. A long time in the making uh, to get these maps and get the actual routes. And it's not a simple process and we were required to do some studies and had some consulting help and Bethany's teams helped. So this is a big deal. And I think Bethany's point, we talked about this, you know, probably well over a year ago. The thought is. We're gonna try it and we're gonna do proof of concept. If it, if these don't work, we'll tweak them. And we're not gonna know until we roll them out. Start circulating the buses. But we're not gonna be afraid of making a mistake and it didn't work. We go back and tweak the map and do it again. So we gotta start somewhere. I think this is. What they put together is a really good plan to, to start out. So.
One thing we have to talk about, how's your staffing level?
Yeah, I mean, it changes every week, I feel like. So um, we are, we are good. We are good to cover this. It would be nice to have about two more part-time drivers. That would give us a buffer for call offs. So we kind of have a system right now um, where we can handle one or two call offs. We've learned the hard way that we do that, but um. Having drivers designated, obviously these have to run. So if there's call offs, we have to pull somebody else. Um. We could use probably two more part-time people to make that comfortable. It is doable right now. So we, we just always seem to be in need of about one to two part timers. Um, and once we get there, it's literally one or two weeks and then somebody else goes. So um.
So when you say part timers though.
Yes.
You know, in, in the world of part time, they may think, okay, I'm gonna be on Monday for four days or whatever. So in your world, part time would mean what? Or person wanting to do part time?
Yeah, that's a good question. We actually have a lot of different shifts that we could cover, what that could look like. We are pretty flexible. Um, it could be every day for four hours or it could be three days a week for seven hours. We try to keep the part-time folks around twenty eight hours. We can't go up to thirty or over thirty. Um, so we like to utilize them the most. Um. I just hired somebody that was interested in just doing Saturdays because we do Saturdays and that, that really helps. So if you just wanna be a Saturday driver, five hours, that's really helpful to us. Uh, we can also, you know, if we can get a second night bus, if you're interested in those evening hours, that's something. Now, it's hard to put a new driver on the night bus because uh, there's a lot of it. Um, potential issues with that. So um, we really try to be flexible. Just depending on, on what the interest is and what the schedule is. If, if you really can't work Wednesdays, we can work around them. Um, Monday, Wednesday, Friday are our busiest times and afternoons just seem to be the hardest to fill. Um, so that's what it means.
So a part time is, is that also you be on call type scenario of someone called off? Now you're your part-time person gets yanked in. Is that part of it?
Potentially, I, we try not to do that. Um, if, if. You kind of learn who's open to that and who's not. And if, if um, we can always send a text out, but it's not like. We'll punish you if you don't come in, but we have a few people that are, they're, this is their second job. This is their retirement job. And they really enjoy it and they would love some more hours. So we do have one or two people that have come in when we have a call off. And they've covered a shift. Um, but it's not a requirement because I, we understand work-life balance. People have a life and they have plans and so we really try to respect that.
Yeah, but that your typical shift then, I mean, I assume you have shifts. So what time does that first shift start in the morning?
Yeah, okay. So we have, as far as full timers, we have five A M. To one P M. That's our A M. Shift. Um, we have a few mid-shift people that come in around eight thirty to ten. And then they work till four thirty or five or six. Um, and then our afternoon shift starts at one. Uh, no, eleven A M. And ends at seven P M. So we have a little bit of an overlap there. Of old timers in the middle of the day, but. Those, the first group of old timers leave at one, so they don't help. They aren't there to help during the three P M. Rush. That we always have. So.
Yeah.
And then we just rotate on the Saturdays. So it is a requirement that everyone does each Saturday. Usually it's about a five hour shift. So, you know, not, if people don't like it, but it's usually maybe once a month. Is if we are fully staffed, it's once a month or once every six weeks. So. I hopefully not too bad.
You're doing great.
In here. So we get it. People have lives, but yeah, so and, and we do have minivans too. So if people are intimidated by the buses and that's why they don't wanna apply for the job, we can start off in a minivan. So if people wanna just have a side, side job here and there, we are more than happy at that.
So they don't need a C D L in order to work.
Correct, correct. Only the very big buses need the C D L. So the, the nine-seat buses are, it's just a regular driver's license. So. And we also do out of county. So if you're just interested in going to Columbus, we can work with that as well. So.
The shop.
Right, well, it's across the street and I'm, I'm not gonna stop you. So.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so that's, yeah, great, great question. So we're excited about the routes and getting this information out. And it will be a expectation is a soft launch, you know, not gonna have a lot of riders in the beginning. And we'll just have conversations one-on-one and start to build up that ridership um, as we go. So that is, that is what we have in our agenda right now.
Yeah, perfect. And it's, it's our understanding that you're gonna be with the architect and tomorrow. And I assume you have ideas the way you're gonna share with them.
Yes, absolutely.
All excited about that.
Yes.
I think you're excited.
Uh, we are.
Yeah, don't leave yet. They're jumping ahead.
But I was curious, so since you have Chestnut Street down to the transit area, will it be the habitat location then? Cause you said June second for this.
Right. Um, so hopefully, I mean, we will, we will have discussions, right? We will have discussions on what we're allowed to do.
Okay.
But that was one of the, you know, we had a different transfer spot and then all of this started to happen. And um, you know, the, that location is a lot, has a lot more room. And ha, and just is more conducive to a transfer location. It was the original plan to, for the original building was, it was going to be the hub. So we kind of jumped back to that for these routes. So we will see what we're allowed to do and we will only do what we are permitted to do. We won't be breaking any rules or ruffling any feathers. Hopefully, so we will see.
Good. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. Great job.
Thank you.
Well, you can say. Cause you might have to go back and redo your charts. Yeah, I'm not all in yet. So uh, Commissioners, I'm, I'm excited to bring you the request for approval for the real estate purchase agreement. Between the Knox County Land Reutilization Corporation and the County Commissioners. And this would be for lot three. Heartland Commerce Park on West Chestnut Street. And this is also referred to in the case of the warehouse, the building. Um, obviously, we started on this process in two thousand twenty. We've looked at lots of places and. Thought we had some things and backtrack, but I think this is a really great option for the county and transit. This gives us the ability to not only have transit there, but have space for county operations as needed and county storage as needed. So I think this is a win-win. The total uh, purchase price will be seven hundred and forty thousand dollars after we get the credits back. So the original purchase price would be one point one million, but it would be a seven hundred and forty thousand dollar cash purchase after the credits for our properties. That we would uh, deed back to the land bank. So. It's ready for you to discuss and adopt. And I will say, uh, Commissioner Cassie is not here today. She's out on vacation. But I have discussed with this heard. She is in agreement with this and she's seen the location. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, it's. Not being done in her absence, but this is, all of you have been, have discussed and seen the property. Um, and it's ready for you to consider for adoption.
And, and we were down there again this morning and we've had multiple visits and excited about uh, this uh, possibility for us.
I would have thought an occasion like this that the manager who was gonna take benefit of this would have probably bought elements or cookies or something. I motion to approve that.
And I will second and those in paper say aye.
Commissioner, that'll require you to sign it two places on that document. The next item we have is uh, the financing of the property. So this is a resolution providing for the issuance of sale of a note. At this point, it would not be a bond. It would be a sale of the note. This is not actually doing it. This is allowing us to move forward. Uh, Allison Benkley with Square Pat Balls will. Be here in the, probably in June to actually bring all of the paperwork, explain it for you to sign. But basically, uh, what we're doing here, this note would be for two point five million dollar issuance. Um, it would be to acquire the building and for the rehabbing of the building. Um, we would also do some county. Uh, things like potentially a conference or anything. We really don't have all of that laid out. So we, we have just kind of a loose budget for that now till we really get plans in place. Um. I think the key to this is to kind of, why we're doing it this way. This note is only for twelve months. It's my recommendation to you. We, we will, it gives us twelve months to kind of look at what the federal government's budget looks like, what the state budget looks like. And how it affects all of our other departments. We can come back in twelve months and determine at that point. Do we wanna pay off the note? Do we wanna pay part of the note? Or do we wanna roll the note into a bond? We have all of those options at our disposal. So it really lets us just kind of pause for twelve months. Get the financing, get the building in place. Then we can really work on the financing or whether I come back and you wanna take cash and pay this note off.
Right.
Or what we wanna do, but it lets us kind of see how the federal budget, the state budget shakes out over the next twelve months.
While you're having this conversation, Jason, would you wanna explain to the people who are watching or gonna be viewing? How much money we saved to tax the?
Well, we figured that probably the, the, we were up to at least uh, probably a four to five million dollar, maybe more county contribution. If we were gonna build the existing buildings. With the grant, the state or the, the feds were gonna give us up to six million dollars. But that project had probably gone closer to twelve million dollars. So it wasn't feasible that we were gonna spend six or eight dollars to build that. Also, the size of the buildings we were gonna build, we're gonna be much smaller. The vehicles were still gonna need to be stored outside in a gated area. Um, this really um, allowed us to purchase this building for a very reasonable cost. And obviously bring all the vehicles inside, bring all of the operations under one building. And have more space for other future county operations. So. If we would have spent six million, it would have only been for transit. This is really, you know, we, we're gonna spend up to two point five, but it's gonna be for transit. As well as other county uses and other county operations.
Sure.
And that two point five is a budget. We hope it's less, but we, we don't know that we really get in. I mean, we. Bethany and I have walked the building once with the architect. So he's coming back this week. Plans will continue to evolve as we, as we look at that. But that's, that's a budget based on what he's kind of seeing on a price per square foot. So rehab office space, we're not really gonna put much in the warehouse. It's, it's a warehouse. So. Um, we're gonna bring our tools and racks and things from the current facility. So that saves us money. So I, I think it's, yes, it's a lot of money, two point five million dollars, up to two point five million is still a lot of money.
Still a lot less.
A lot, a lot less. Uh, and I will preface that too, that we, we, the building Bethany's currently in, the county commissioners own that building. Uh, we hope it's, it was appraised at four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars two and a half years ago. So we, we hope to get, you know, four to five hundred thousand more out of that. When we do, that could go on this note. To, to help pay it. So it really gives us lots of options. And that's why I recommend the note. Our financial advisors have, we've, I've had meetings with them and this is really the best way to do it. Gives us twelve months to figure it all out. Um, and so that's my recommendation to you. This note, there's nothing for you to sign. This is just you authorizing you to continue to go forward. Uh, to have that worked on and then all of that financing paperwork will come back to you probably in June. It's fine.
Yeah, great. I motion to approve that. And I second and those favor say aye.
All right, Bethany.
Hey, well, thank you. Actually, we're gonna go work on more stuff that we can hand out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bethany. Thank you, Bethany.
See, I told you we would get you a building eventually. Okay, now Commissioners, we have, these are the ditch funds of, I think Rob and Cameron, we're gonna talk a little bit about ditches or Rob did. Uh, this is just sets the assessments like we do each year. So for, the first one is to set the assessments for Ford Creek. Ditch and Hill Your Township for twenty twenty-six. And this would um. This cost is per parcel, depending on the size of the parcel. And so there's a hundred and twenty-two parcels in this ditch. And they would set the assessment at the same value as what it's been for the last several years with no change.
And motion to approve. And I second those favor say aye.
All right. The next one we have is Ralphie's Ditch in Hill Your Township. This one, we are setting the assessment at zero uh, because the, the. Uh, cap is thirty-six hundred dollars and we're at the cap. So we would, and there's not gonna be any work done. Pat Ralphie's ditch this year. So we would put the cap, or we put the assessment at zero for this year. There'd be no tax assessment on those parcels. There's fifty-three parcels of this ditch.
Motion to approve. And second, I'll just favor say aye. I was thinking.
And I'll say, um, with these, you know, Cameron and Rob and I, we're still talking about what the process is that. Not raising the assessments, but raising the cap. So work can be done, but at this point, we have to follow what the current caps are. And that's why you're see some of these because the same, the same would be for Six More Meadows subdivision. There's ten parcels. And we're recommending an assessment of zero because we're at the three thousand dollar cap.
Motion to approve. And second, those favor say aye.
Right. And then the last one is for Kukose Plantation Subdivision. There's fourteen parcels and we're recommending the cap be set at zero because. Uh, or the assessment be set at zero because we're at the cap of forty-five hundred dollars on that.
Motion to approve. And second, and those favor say aye. All right.
Okay, uh, we have approved a temporary permit. For acknowledging the sale of liquor at the Knox County Fair from July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. You're gonna have two of these. This is the first one because these can only be available five days, right Penny? So they have to do. That's the two or seven days long. They have to do two permits. So this is the first one. It's been signed by the sheriff and it's ready for your approval and say that true.
Motion to approve. And second, those favor say aye.
All right. And then the next one is the same, but it's for July twenty-fourth through July twenty-sixth.
Motion to approve. Second, those favor say aye.
We have approved the Ohio Department of Youth Services. We have approved the Ohio Department of Youth Services fiscal year twenty twenty-six subsidy grant in agreement for Knox County Juvenile Court.
Motion to approve second, those favor say aye, all right.
Not just for the dollars, one signature. And then we have approved the bid award. For the Knox County Engineer, this is for the Howard Danville Road Bridge to the Crawford Construction Company. In the amount of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred, eight hundred dollars and fifty cents. This was on paper the day we opened, not the low bidder, but there was a fabulation error on the low bidder's bid and so it was. Disqualified, so it's being awarded to Crawford. Um, Construction Company.
It wasn't the low bid, but.
Right, and motion to approve. And second, and those favor say aye, all right.
We have utility permit for Lincoln Royal Electric on uh, Jeff Run Road and Jackson Township.
Motion to approve second, those favor say aye.
And then another utility permit for Lincoln Royal Electric, Laura Ford Town, Andy Road. And Old Mansfield Devil's Ridge and Morris Township.
Motion to approve in second, those favor say aye, all right.
And then the last utility permit for Lincoln Royal Electric, Old Mansfield Road between Kirkett Street and Smith Road and Morris Township.
Motion to approve second, and those favor say aye, all right.
And then the last item we have is to prove an amendment. To remember an end of understanding between Knox County J F S. And Knox County Family and Children First Council and Knox County, or, I'm sorry, and Knox Public Health. For the contract team family support coordinated position. This is just a. A amendment to that, agreed.
Motion to approve in second, and those favor say aye, all right.
It looks like Penny's got you loaded up with minutes here to approve. And bills. Uh, the only item I have, if, if you lay that up here for me. Okay. The, it's. Knox County Historical Society just wanted us to uh, to let you know, and I guess let the public know. They are gonna be recognizing fourteen and honoring fourteen young men from Knox County who sacrificed their lives in Vietnam. Um, they're gonna do images of the heroes. Reflecting how they were in life. And this can be seen at the Knox County Historical Society. From May twelfth until June ninth. Uh, it's open daily from eight AM to eight PM. And they say that some of the banners are conveniently located outside for viewing. From your vehicle, but you can also park and come inside for a more in-depth time of remembrance, so. That is May twelfth to June ninth from eight to eight.
So over the dates again?
June, or sorry, May twelfth to June ninth from eight to eight.
Okay.
And Andrew, if maybe you could put that on also. And Commissioners, that's all I have for you today.
Commissioner Lester, do you have anything you, you want to share?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Uh, just a note, Commissioner, so Tuesday, we won't meet because it's after a Monday holiday, so we won't. We won't have session on Tuesday, but we'll be back for a full session on Thursday.
Yeah, yeah. And for those uh, may have been aware, there was a meeting on Monday night talking about property. Taxes and how it impacts the schools. So we, we are all monitoring that to see. Uh, what the impact is gonna be at that legislation level. So encourage our, you to get ahold of your state representatives and let them know your concern. Uh, if you have any, and uh, help them in that process. I think that's all that I would share at this point, uh, Jason already mentioned that our next meeting will actually be next Thursday. Uh, because uh, we won't have a meeting on Tuesday, so I mean, everyone enjoy their holiday. Commissioner Lester will be at the parade, they ask him to speak as he wasn't able to get his speech prepared in time for that. Uh, but maybe next year, uh, Barry will be. Uh, everyone be safe on the holiday weekends, say, thank you, and that motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
And I second, and we stay adjourned at this time, thank you.